Time is. I'll call this, uh, meeting to order on Monday, February 16th, 2015. Want to welcome everyone. Very glad to have with us tonight Reverend Brian Sullivan of the St. Benedict's Episcopal Church located at 2160 Coop Lake Road. He'll come forward at this time and give our invocation and also lead us in the place of flag. So would everyone please rise?
Let us pray. Almighty God, our heavenly Father, send down upon these who hold office in this city of Smyrna, the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice. It was steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people through Jesus Christ, our Lord. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For those folks that are looking for a good Episcopal church or want to get involved in other folks standing at St. Benedict's Episcopal Church at 2160 Coop Lake Road, um, just right down here, they'd love to have you. Uh, agenda changes, um, the only agenda change I think that we have is that the, um, character education presentation by King Springs Elementary, since they're not in school today, uh, it will be put off until the next, our next meeting. Twenty fifteen dash six two item four A and four B have been withdrawn for consideration by Polty Homes, which is the advocate. These items were tabled at specific agenda date, January 20th. I guess that comes up on further down. It's just for information. So if you're here for that, it has been withdrawn. We've got a couple of proclamations and a, and a presentation. Um, I'm going to read the first one and I'm going to do this because I've, I've known John Halls for, um, let's say, John, fifty something years. He grew up in Smyrna and he and I went to school together. And then we worked together at the postal service for, and I retired after forty years. I don't know, John, how many years he really worked, but, uh, he's always been a part of Smyrna. And I'm going to ask him to come forward at this time as I read a proclamation in recognition of Purple Heart City. So would, would all your guys come up? And I think I got their names. Doug Middleton, Walter Swinson, and there was another guy that's here. Us becoming a Purple Heart City, actually, my, my, my father either got two or three Purple Hearts. I never could tell what he, whatever he told me as a result of World War II. I know he got shot at least twice. He got shot in the head and got shot in the, uh, rear end. And, uh, I asked him, how did you get shot in the rear? And he said, his exact quote, he's a hell, I was running. And, uh, he was a, uh, in the Battle of the Bulge in World War II and, um, um, so he was a recipient of, of a Purple Heart. So I'm going to read this proclamation and then, John, I'm going to let y'all tell a little bit about what y'all's association does. We're glad to have y'all here tonight and I'm glad that we're going to be one of many Purple Heart, um, cities across the nation. City of Smyrna, a Purple Heart City, whereas the people of the city of Smyrna have great admiration, utmost gratitude for all the men and women who selfishly served their country and this community and the armed forces. And whereas veterans have paid a high price of freedom by leaving their families and communities in place in themselves in harm's way for the good of all. And whereas contributions and sacrifices of the men and women from the city of Smyrna who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas many men and women in uniform have given their lives while serving in the armed forces. And whereas many citizens of the community have earned the Purple Heart Medal honor as, as a result of being wounded while engaged in combat with an enemy force construed as the singular notorious act of essential service. And whereas this is a time to honor the service and sacrifices of our nation's men and women in uniform wounded or killed by the enemy while serving to protect the freedoms enjoyed by all Americans. Therefore, I, AMAX Bacon, Mayor of the City of Smyrna, hereby declare the city Smyrna as a Purple Heart City and proclaim February 16th, 2015, as a day of which the city of Smyrna will remember and recognize all veterans who are recipients of the Purple Heart Medal and signed by me. And I'll just tell you this, I worked with John after he came back from, from Vietnam and, um, I know he was injured and, and I don't know how he did it, um, because his, his leg was messed up. I'm talking not, here again, I just don't say things politically correct. Uh, one of his legs was nice looking, but the other one wasn't. And, uh, and he had a built uphill and she, but you know what? That, that never ever slowed him down from doing his job and he never asked for anything special. And every now and then he'd say, my old war wounds acting up. And that was just sort of a joke when he didn't want to work overtime. But, um, uh, John, I'm going to present this to you and, uh, we're proud and glad that we're a Purple Heart City now. I'm going to let you, I'll come down there. If there's a camera, I'll come down there. Y'all can get in the picture. Y'all can, uh, might be worth a, if you take this and a dollar down, that'll have, you can get a, uh...
Thank you.
Thank y'all. And then John, say something. Thank you.
I'd just like to thank, uh, Mayor of Smyrna, the City Council, and the city of Smyrna. I did join the Army after graduating Campbell High School and I've noticed you have your veteran memorial down the street. All those that went to Vietnam, I think I knew all but one and I wish I, they were back here. I'll let Doug Middleton tell you exactly what our organization does. He's the state president.
First of all, thank you very much. It's a, it's a, we are honored by your proclamation. You now join, I think you will be now, I believe, the 55th city in the state of Georgia, which includes the state itself, which has proclaimed itself to be a Purple Heart state. We have some twenty counties, I believe, but the total count right now is, uh, I think with you makes it either ninety-five or ninety-six different proclamations. That puts us, uh, second in the nation, uh, in having the most designated Purple Heart things. This is really an outgrowth of the Purple Heart Trail or that you have seen in, in Georgia. There's a section of I-20 that's designated as a Purple Heart Trail, but that, as you cross the country, you'll find different places that do that. But, uh, our mission is to take care of other veterans. We're a very small organization because our membership criteria is infinitesimally small. You must have received a Purple Heart Medal to, to join our group, which makes us unlike any other veteran service organization. But, uh, our mission is to provide services to all veterans regardless of whether they have a Purple Heart or not. So we, uh, we are very deeply appreciative tonight that you have honored us so and, uh, want to thank each of you very, very much.
Anybody else want to say? Here, John, here's something, you can put that in just in case. That, that'll be two dollars extra. Thank you, John. Thank you very much. Thank y'all. Thank y'all. There was, there was two guys in our high school class that got, uh, John was one of them. He was actually a class behind me, but, uh, came back from Vietnam and, uh, and they came back and they were not as good a shape as they left. But, uh, again, um, you never heard John say a word about complaining about anything except when he didn't want to work overtime. And then he'd throw out the old, ah, the old war wounds acting up, but, uh, John Halls, you're a good man. Thank y'all very much. We have a, um, proclamation recognition of Georgia Arbor Day and I know that, uh, Ann Kirk and maybe some of her folks are here and Corky Welch is going to read that. And then you just stay up there because, uh, we got another presentation, so.
Thank you, Your Honor. A proclamation by the Mayor of the City of Smyrna for Georgia Arbor Day. Whereas the first Arbor Day was celebrated in eighteen seventy-two in Nebraska as a special day for planting trees and has grown to thousands of celebrations in communities across our nation each year. And whereas community partners, families, and friends will be joined together at local Arbor Day ceremonies to recognize the benefits of trees and urban forests. And whereas trees will be planted across the state, creating a lasting legacy for future generations. And whereas trees improve water quality and quantity, reduce the erosion of precious topsoil, increase property values and economic vitality in business areas, provide shade, cleanse the air, create habitat for wildlife, and add beauty to communities. And whereas trees promote outdoor recreation, which improves human health and well-being and reduces nature deficient disorder in children by encouraging more activity and connection to the natural world. And whereas all the Georgia benefits from forestry, which contributes billions of dollars annually to our state's economy and provides employment for more than one hundred thousand people. Now, therefore, I, AMAX Bacon, Mayor of the City of Smyrna, do hereby proclaim February twentieth, two thousand and fifteen as Arbor Day in Georgia and encourage our citizens to plant trees, thus leaving a legacy for present and future generations. In witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause of the seal of the City of Smyrna to be affixed upon this, the sixteenth day of February in the year of our Lord, two thousand and fifteen. AMAX Bacon.
Thank you.
Did I see some people planting trees Saturday? It looked like you, Ann.
I'm not sure. Oh, I was over there, yes, I was putting a marker in. Thank you.
And, and Ann, you want to say anything about Arbor Day? Because we're going to turn it over to you next to talk about Keep Smyrna Beautiful and the national awards and state awards that we've won.
Thank you, Mayor Bacon. Arbor Day across the United States is generally celebrated in April, but in the southern states, it's, it's celebrated in February because this is the time the trees are dormant. Our trees actually start leafing out at the end of March. So this is the time to be planting trees in our area of the country. But if you Google Arbor Day, it's going to say April, the third Friday in April, but it's actually the third Friday in February. And we celebrate it on Saturday because more people are able to participate on Saturday than during the week. We will be having an Arbor Day festival in conjunction with the Tree Board. We work together with the Tree Board and the Community Development Department to put together the, um, Tree City applications. We're in our thirteenth year. We've completed twelve years as a Tree City and this is going towards our thirteenth. So on Arbor Day, we will be having a program with the Georgia Urban Forester, Joe Burgess, at ten a.m. at the community center. It's free. You can come and bring your questions about trees. You can bring pictures if you have problems. It's going to be before and after the storm, assessing tree risk. What a timely thing for this week. So sometimes we don't recognize that our trees have been damaged and can cause further problems once the storm's over, even if they didn't fall. So this will be a really, really good presentation. And while that's going on, we'll have activities for the children in a separate room with the Tree Board and some other volunteers. We'll be doing crafts and, and doing coloring pictures with them. Then at two p.m. in the library, they'll be showing the movie, The Lorax. And this is a really great little Dr. Seuss movie and it's totally free. So those will be our Arbor Day celebrations this year. Thank you.
Do you want to go into number E?
Yes. Let's, uh, will my board members come up and bring the award? We are very, very happy to, tonight, to present to the city this first place award, uh, national award from Keep America Beautiful for the programming that is pos, made possible by the cooperation that we get from the city and the department heads and all the citizens and volunteers of Smyrna. We couldn't do it. It's, it takes a village to do this work and we certainly have that and that's why we were, we are recognized. And one of the reasons we are recognized is we have volunteers like Angie Bolton, who single-handedly painted the fence around the Smyrna Cemetery just down the street. We finally completed that picture, that, that project. I say we, that's the collective we. Uh, she didn't want anybody to help her paint because she said they would make a mess of it. But, uh, Keep Smyrna Beautiful paid for the paint and Angie supplied the grinder and the elbow grease and the flesh and blood and, um, and the time. And I don't know how many hours, what was it, like nine hundred hours?
It was close to three hundred hours.
Three hundred hours, um, that she put into this. And Philip Panaford, who was her sidekick, was there protecting her and watching over her as she worked. He took pictures, so, um, so we're very, very excited about this and this is, this was, uh, the award for our storytelling, which is, recognizes our efforts to get the word out to people about the things that we do and the good things that are going on in the city of Smyrna. That, you can hang that in City Hall. Thank you. And I'm sorry more of our members couldn't be here tonight. If you will indulge me, I would like to recognize them by name because it's, is their work that makes this happen. Liz Davis is our chairperson and the mayor's appointee. Lois Lewis is our treasurer. Angie Bolton is here tonight. She's our secretary. And Derek Norton is our Ward One representative. Lisa Castleberry is Ward Two. Betty Williams is Ward Three. Carleen McNabb is Ward Four. Nell Robinson, Ward Six. Eva Tackett is an at-large member. Eric Dennis and his wife is having a baby right as we speak. Their second little boy. Um, Ed Plansker, Pam Dobbs, Gina Bridges, and Judy Hartley. And they make up the Keep Smyrna Beautiful Board of Directors. And if you know of anyone or if you yourself are interested in volunteering or serving with us, please give us a call. Thank you so much.
Ann, thank you, uh, too, for your leadership and all the things that, that Keeps Smyrna Beautiful does. It's, uh, I don't know how long we've had it, but there's always been great volunteers that, Sandy Sands is back there. She had something to do with it and her, yeah. And, and her, you know, I mean, there's been so many people that have really given back to the city and picking up trash is a humbling experience because I did it for a few years. And, uh, yep. And, and it's like, uh, it's amazing what you pick up in the street. But anyway, thank y'all so much and y'all are getting ready to get a new location and we're excited about that. And our city wouldn't look the way it does if it wasn't for you guys, so. All right. Next one, next item on the agenda is, uh, land issues, zoning and annexation. A is twenty fourteen dash four zero four, request withdrawn by applicant table from January twentieth, twenty fifteen, public hearing. Southern request Z fourteen dash zero twenty-eight, rezoning from LI, Cobb County to RMC eight, conditional Smyrna five point one, six one acres, land lot six ninety-one, forty-six nineteen, and forty-six eighty South Cobb Drive and forty-six ninety-six Oakdale Road, Polty Homes Corporation. There's really not, not much to say about this. I said it at the beginning of the withdrawal. Uh, Ron Fennel is, uh, his name is on this one. I'll get him to take care of that one after I read, you take care of A and then I'll read B after that, too.
Mr. Mayor, I, uh, would like to move that the city formally accept the withdrawal from the applicant of two zero one four dash four zero four, uh, application zoning request Z fourteen dash zero twenty-eight. Do we need to do this formally in a vote? Yep.
All right, we've got a motion and a second by Ms. Pritchett. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Approve seven zero. Item B is ordinance twenty fifteen dash zero one, annexation request, one hundred percent owners, requesting annexation ordinance twenty fifteen oh one for track one, two point nine six eight acres located at forty-six nineteen South Cobb Drive, track two, point zero eight one eight acres located at forty-six ninety-six Oakdale Road, track three, one point seven three five acres located at forty-six eighty South Cobb Drive, all tracks lying in Smyrna, Georgia, land lot six ninety-one, seventeenth district, second sector of Cobb County, withdrawn by the applicant. This is also, um, in conjunction with the withdrawal of the request for rezoning, Mr. Ron Fennel.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that the city accept the withdrawal of ordinance two zero one five dash zero one from the applicant.
Motion and second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Approve seven zero. Item C, twenty fifteen dash forty-eight, approval of the fee waiver request for Quality Tape and Label Company located at thirty-five fifteen North Coop Lake Road. Ms. Howard, the background, please.
We had received a request from Quality Tape and Label for the waiver of certain development fees.
You got your mic on?
For the waiver of certain development fees. Those fees totaled seven thousand three hundred and thirty-five dollars and staff is recommending that we waive four thousand five hundred and thirty-one dollars of those fees.
Mr. Corky Welch.
Thank you. I'd like to call Mr. Ken Sudrith up if he's out here to give a little short explanation of, uh, some of the issues and why we reduced it, but, uh, just something brief.
We have received multiple requests, uh, throughout the years. This is just another one regarding a small business. Uh, they are expanding, uh, their site, uh, their building and there is about a hundred and fifty thousand plus, uh, investment in that. There are certain fees that are hard costs and there are certain fees that, uh, we handle, um, through reviews and inspections and so forth. What staff is recommending is that those hard costs, which are in the information that, uh, we provided you, uh, actually need to, um, still be paid. But the other costs, um, in order to assist the business, uh, we feel is appropriate so that the, the four thousand three hundred and, uh, and some dollars that, um, Ms. Howard had referenced are the actual fees, um, that staff feels are appropriate. The other fees, uh, the difference between the seventy-three thirty-five, uh, would be, uh, they would still have to pay those fees. That's it.
I have no other questions. Uh, Mr. Mayor, with that, I'd like to move that, uh, make a motion that this property be designated as a targeted property and, uh, that we approve the fee waiver requested for Quality Tape and Label in the amount of four thousand five hundred and thirty-one dollars.
Motion and second to approve this, uh, waiver, the fee, uh, waiver request. Any, any other comments? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Let's approve seven zero. We're glad that they're staying in Smyrna. I know that they've, they've expanded their business. They created a lot more jobs and I think that's, uh, that's good for us to help them out. Uh, five is previous licenses, we have none. Six is formal business. We have no, nothing under that. Seven, commercial building permits, we have none. We have two items under the consent agenda. Ms. Howard, will you please read the consent agenda for council's approval?
Yes, we have twenty fifteen dash fifty-eight, approval of mayor and council meeting minutes, February second, two thousand and fifteen. Item B, twenty fifteen dash fifty-one, award of RFP fifteen dash zero three zero for time keeping system to Kronos Incorporated in the amount of eighty-seven thousand five hundred, funded from Capital Improvement Projects Fund and to authorize the mayor to execute any related documents.
Here, motion, will you approve the consent agenda? Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Approve seven zero. Committee reports will start tonight with, uh, starting at Mr. Ron Fennel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I'd like to ask Chief David Lee to come forward to give us a Smyrna Police Department update, if he's, uh, still in the room. There he is. I hope those guys are costing you money out there on the street, nabbing bad guys.
Well, that's one of the things I was going to cover. I only got about forty-five minutes worth of material to go over tonight, but...
You should enjoy your time with Mr. Fennel and Mr. Lavenka because we're leaving.
I won't touch that comment, but thank you. What Mr. Fennel was, uh, alluding to, last year I gave out a total of three hundred and sixty dollars in gift cards that I personally buy for any of my officers who take guns away from bad guys. And I was telling them so far this year, I've given out a hundred and eighty dollars. And I was telling them I was afraid I was going to have to take out a second mortgage on my house. And he, his response was he hopes that my officers make me broke. It's like, I wasn't quite sure how to take that. Yes, yes, you did. Anyways, a couple of things I wanted to bring up. I know I put it into the weekly report, but we're members, the Smyrna Police Department's member, FBI matched task force. And their, uh, goal is basically to, it's a human trafficking, but their goal is to get as many juvenile prostitutes off the street. And, uh, we, we conducted one last month and, uh, is one of the larger arrests that we did, uh, in all of Cobb County. Because this task force also consists of members from Marietta Police Department, Acworth, Kennesaw, and Cobb County. But, but during that last thing that we did, uh, there was a total of twenty people arrested, twelve prostitutes, twelve in prostitutes, seven of them pimps. And, uh, we, we did get one juvenile who was mentally challenged, uh, who was being forced into prostitution. But, uh, the matched task force, uh, that's been operating Cobb County, uh, last year was responsible for recovering seventy-five underage prostitutes and human trafficking victims, uh, in the calendar year two thousand and fourteen. And once again, we played a big part of it. We have, uh, two, two of our officers, Lieutenant Benetchevis and Detective Romali, who are actually members of it. But of course, you know, we supplement it with the different details with other officers. And then one other thing I want to say, uh, last week, the police department, we hosted a training program, uh, at the community center for all the different neighborhood watch programs to help get them more involved and to, uh, really bring them in line. One of the things we're having problems with, and I know many of you on the council have seen it too, is that somebody sees something or they become a victim of a crime, they notify one of their friends, they notify HO direct, uh, person, their HOA or their neighborhood watch person, then turn, then they send it to the council person, and a week later, we're finding out about it. So that's one of the things that we've been working on, trying to get them, to get everybody in line, when you see something, call nine-one-one. Because a lot of times we get the same answer is that, oh, we don't want to bother you. Well, you know, and that's what we tell them. That's what you pay your taxes for, bother us. Let us come out and take care of it. But that's it. Quick forty-five minutes.
Has, has anybody taken you up on your Craigslist offer to use the parking lot or to help?
Glad, glad you brought that up. I forgot to bring that up. I don't know if they have or not. I've, I've actually received about six emails thanking the Smyrna Police Department for doing it. Officer Chris Graft was the one who came up with the program and, uh, you know, it's, it's a good thing. Uh, I know Marietta Police Department is now falling behind us and getting ready to kick off a similar program, especially since, you know, they've recently had an incident. So we, you know, we want to make things as safe as possible. And, you know, what better way than to do it at the police department? In fact, if, you know, if there's something there that has identification number, we can run it on the computer and we'll do it for them to make sure that it's not stolen or at least not reported stolen at the time.
I just want to mention one thing that, um, a week ago, Friday, I guess it was, uh, at the funeral for Deputy Chief Mike Brown, your, your guys, our guys, did, the honor guard did a great job. Uh, the, the whole ceremony and the whole service was just unbelievable. And, um, they just did everything just right. And I commend y'all for that. And it took a lot of hard work by your guys. As a matter of fact, I remember when Mike Brown was on that honor guard, that he was, I don't know if he started... if he started it, but he was very involved in it when it first got going. So it was quite a going-away party for Mike. He did, you know, everybody, I almost cried one time. But they did a great job.
Well, I had to be careful about that, because somebody threatened me that if I cried, they were going to do bodily harm on me. But I won't mention Max's name, I mean, the mayor's name. But no, and I appreciate that. And, you know, we had a lot of assistance from the other jurisdictions. In fact, Cobb County Police Department volunteered to work the streets so that all of our officers could attend. We even had the Rome Police Department Honor Guard who has handed out the bulletins at the funeral home. You know, it's quite a brotherhood.
Yeah. Well, I'll tell you, this is the thing that I regret missing, didn't know about it, but when they transported Mike from, I guess, the medical examiner to Carmichael's, that, I know Scott was up in Marietta, and he was coming back. He said he thought it must have been the president was coming in town. But they had an entourage, and it was, it was great. It was different jurisdictions from all over the place that helped bring Mike down, closed off the roads and stuff. So that was, you're right, it is a very close-knit family.
Yes.
And Chief, I just want to echo that sentiment. It was a moving experience. I hope we don't repeat anytime soon, but that Deputy Chief Brown had so much impact on so many people in his career, and as you say, the brotherhood, which is strong, showing how you laid arrest and sent to their eternal reward, you know, a quality public safety official. And I was just honored to witness it. I know Melon and I stood in front of City Hall with some other staff as the Cortage came up. And that alone is a moving enough tribute. But when you came into the parking lot and that giant American flag that the fire department had helped pay tribute as well, it was moving. And he will be missed, we will all miss him. But your team did an outstanding job, and I was honored to be in the room as that service progressed. It was very nice. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it. And it is tough, and we're still feeling the effects. Mike and I go back over 30 years, you know, and it has been tough, but, you know, we're working through it. And he was the Smyrna Police Department. And I know somebody came up to me and told me that Mike enjoyed working for me. And I said, Mike didn't work for me. I said, quite the contrary, I worked for him. But, yeah, he will be missed, but thank you.
Thank you, and all the team that stand there every day and are steadfast and protect us. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Chief Akery, I know we have a winter episode, and we're preparing for other things, so I know you're going to give us some tips that Smyrna citizens can stay safe as a result.
I hope the first tip is for us to get home quick.
I'll agree with you, and I'll keep it quick. Yeah, and I appreciate you saying that. As a matter of fact, we've spent, as you can imagine, the last, good bit of the last couple of days preparing for possible winter weather and the possible impacts that that could have. And fortunately, as you all know, the majority of the ice, the bad stuff, was north of us today. But we're not quite out of the woods just yet. Just this afternoon, around 5 o'clock, the National Weather Service issued a special weather statement. It's a weather product that they reserve, that's beyond an advisory or watch or a warning, but a special weather statement specifically for the metro Atlanta area, warning people to stay aware of the very real likelihood of icy roads in early AM hours in the morning. And they're saying specifically from 5 to 10 AM. So we're encouraging people that unless just absolutely necessary, if it's at all possible, please just try to stay home. Might be a good time to go into work late or try not to be on the roads up until about 10 AM. I also wanted to mention that the very first Citizen Fire Academy class for the year 2015 is coming up next month. It'll begin on Thursday, March 26. We're real excited about that. It's probably going to fill up pretty quick, so if you're interested, or if you know anybody that's interested, please have them visit our website, Smyrna City Fire, for application information. And also, one thing that I didn't have written down in my notes, because it just happened about 7 o'clock, but it's worth mentioning, just as I was parking in the parking lot, the radio went off advising the fire department that there was a car fire in the Checkers parking lot. And I found out that there was an elderly gentleman in the car, and our very own Parks and Rec Director, Steve Ciaccio, was driving here, and he saw the car on fire. He pulled into the parking lot, noticed that there was somebody, and this is before the fire department got there, noticed that there was somebody in the car that couldn't get out. Steve opened the door, got the gentleman out. He's being treated for smoke inhalation, but it looks like he's going to be okay. So two purposes to mention that. Way to go, Steve, and that's probably why he's not here right now, second.
He has a knack for doing that.
He is.
A couple times.
Twice, at least. Yeah, yeah. So good job, Steve.
Yep.
That's all I had.
Thank you.
Be safe going home.
Thank you.
Chief, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, that's all in my formal report. I again want to thank everybody in Smyrna who chips in, whether it's at Keep Smyrna Beautiful or within one of the civic organizations in town. But I particularly want to thank our men and women in public service, whether they're park rangers, police, or fire, who stand and protect our businesses, our families, and our lives. I thank them for what they're doing, and I hope you have an opportunity to encounter one of them and do the same. And please be safe during this winter driving season. Thank you.
Mr. Wayne Lenika.
Thank you, Your Honor. I too want to echo my comments and thoughts to the Smyrna Police Department on the way they handled the funeral for Deputy Chief Mike Brown. That was Friday, February 6. Thankfully, in my service, that's been the only time we've had an officer die on duty, in Mike's case, from health reasons, not from an event. But the service and the professionalism of everybody who planned and participated in that could not help but make you both proud of Mike Brown and proud of Smyrna. I mean, it really was a fitting and moving tribute. Our prayers remain with Monica and his family and friends. And, you know, we all will miss Mike a great deal. I also want to thank Congressman David Scott, who had his annual Military Academy appointment presentations the next day, February 7, at Bronner Hall in Smyrna. It was great to have all those people from all over the 13th District come to Smyrna and hopefully spend some money while they were here, coming or going. In particular, I want to recognize Gabrielle Pinson, who's a student at Whitfield Academy and received an appointment to the U.S. Air Force Academy from Congressman Scott. We're proud of all of those academy appointments. Also want to thank the folks in the Creewood-Evinings neighborhood for allowing me to speak at their annual HOA meeting, which was Sunday, the 8. That was a busy weekend for a lot of reasons. And, you know, it was good to see those folks and spend time with them. One of the things that we haven't talked about, but we've gotten a number of communications about, those of us up here on the council, has been about the house of the late Raymond Reed, State Senator Raymond Reed, who lived on Atlanta Road just north of Collier Drive until he passed away here recently. And the family's trying to decide what to do with the house. A number of people have asked that the city consider buying the house. And, you know, I would just say that we're looking carefully at that. I spoke with one of the family members this evening prior to the meeting, and there's a certain time pressure, they feel, to make a decision and, you know, sell the house or do something with it. There's a certain due diligence that, on our side, we feel, you know, I don't think anybody would buy a house without having it inspected. That would obviously be, for me, a requirement. We need to consider not only the purchase price of the house, but what sort of renovations and repairs might be needed to the home in order to use it for public purposes. Two things struck me, and a number of us toured the house last Friday afternoon, and I'd never been in the house, and it was interesting to see that old home. I mean, it's a wonderful old home. But for government purposes, it's not handicapped accessible. That's something that clearly all of our citizens would need to be able to go there if we were to buy it. The restrooms inside are not handicapped accessible. I noticed that when you went in the bathrooms, now these are, you know, personal bathrooms in a home, but the sink was on one level, and to get to the toilet, for example, you had to step up to another level. And again, that doesn't work for people with disabilities. So do we renovate, you know, all those bathrooms? Or do we have to build additional public facilities on the structure in order to use it? And then finally, there's the big question of if we spend what could end up being several million dollars to acquire the property, what is the city need for the property? We can't buy every home that comes for sale in the city, obviously. And what we do spend taxpayer money on, we need to be very wise and careful in doing so and do it for needs that we've identified as appropriate for the community. I know after the tour, the mayor and I stood and talked for 30 or 45 minutes about possible uses and ideas and what might work or might not work. And we're still struggling with all those questions. You know, at this point, I would simply report back to citizens who have expressed an interest that, you know, we're trying to get answers to our questions. We have a lot of questions. We have a lot of due diligence that wouldn't be expected of us, you know, in a transaction of several million dollars. And also that the family of Raymond Reed is not willing to wait a lengthy period of time for us to consider what our options would be. You know, for instance, should we have a town hall meeting and talk about that with the citizens? I don't know if the Reed family would give us time to do that. I just don't know. I mean, there's a whole lot of questions right now. We're trying to get the answers, and, you know, I just wanted people to understand that it's something that we're looking at, that we're talking about and considering, and trying to make the right and best decision. And what's the answer as of tonight? I don't know. But it is something that we are taking a hard look at. Your Honor, with that, I yield.
Ms. Susan Wilkinson.
Thank you, Your Honor. I want to begin by thanking Chief Lee and his police department for the Operation Safe Cell. I also heard from a lot of citizens from Ward 5 that want to thank you for coming up with that suggestion. They thought it was a wonderful idea. And I also want to thank you for what a wonderful job that you did with the ceremony for Mike Brown. I was able to learn more about Mike Brown, and I think it was a wonderful tribute to him, and he's going to be greatly missed. And he's going to also be missed by a lot of the citizens who I also heard from and that were saddened by his loss. So thank you for your work in the ceremony, too. And I also want to thank Steve Ciaccio for jumping to the rescue of a possible citizen or someone that was in our city to help them. And so, you know, we understand why he's not here tonight. And also, Mary Moore from the library is at the library late tonight because she allowed some of her employees to go home early, so she has to stay there to close up the library. I think some of them lived far away, like north in Canton, so I want to let you know about what she has going on. In March and April, the Smyrna Library will host the National Traveling Exhibit, Dust, Drought, and Dreams Gone Dry. And it's a commemoration of the American Dust Bowl of the 1930s. The exhibit features 20 lavishly illustrated panels about the history, geography, and people of the time period. The library will hold a kickoff event on Sunday, March 8, from 3:00 to 4:30 PM called Women of the Dust Bowl. History interpreters will be dressed in costume and tell the stories of actual women who lived through the tragedy. More information is available at www.smyrna-librarian.com. So with that, I yield. Thank you.
Mr. Corky Welch.
Thank you, Your Honor. I see Ann has no report this evening, and Scott Stokes is out beginning the work on our streets, I believe. I would like to say one little thing about Deputy Chief Brown's funeral last week. I just have to think, I was personally honored to have been there, and I can't swear, anybody would be proud to have a funeral of the type and the magnitude with the people that loved him that were there. It was a great honor on my part just to have known him. But the people that were there really showed their respect to him and everybody. It was very evident that he was a well-loved man.
With that, Your Honor, I yield. Ms. Taryn Olwicz.
Thank you. I'll echo what Corky said. It was absolutely an honor to be included in a group thought worthy of sitting towards the front of the house at Deputy Chief Brown's funeral last week. It was absolutely, it was a beautiful service. It was a tribute to him, it was a tribute to his wife, Monica, and everyone just did a beautiful job in honoring him. Community Relations does not have a report tonight. Tony Joe, does Finance have a report? Yeah, I think that we don't have a report from Finance tonight. I wanted to take a moment, though, to thank Tammy Sadler-Jones and to welcome Tammy back after being away on maternity leave. Welcome back. And I wanted to thank her and thank Tony Joe Howard and thank Ken Sudrith, who have collaborated and worked together to serve all the citizens and the staff of the city in the absence of having a full-time city administrator. We are in the search right now for a new city administrator for the city of Smyrna, where we begin the interviewing process this week. But in the meantime, the reason I think most residents have not noticed that anything has changed is because nothing has changed, because we have this wonderful team, the Troika, as it were, who are guiding us every day. And thank you very much.
Ms. Andrea Bluestein.
Mr. Sudrith, I believe you have a report for us.
Oh, here's your pen and a bar, and you can have it back. You better get it now.
Max, it's actually your pen, because it's city bought it.
You're kidding.
So you can have it.
Thanks.
Quick report. The best way I can sum up everything instead of repeating is in checking the numbers today, the projected revenue that we had for community development with regard to all of our building permits, electrical permits, HVAC, all that stuff, we're already at 112%. And that's only out of seven months. I think that sort of sums everything up.
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you. Unfortunately, I was not able to attend Mike Brown's funeral last week. I had a conflicting doctor's appointment. But I just wanted Monica to know and the rest of his family, what a wonderful person he was, and he will be sorely missed. With that, I yield.
Ms. Melody Pritchett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too, like everyone else, was really moved by that ceremony, chief. I tell you, it was something like I've seen in a movie, with all the precision, with the officers and the standing guard and changing of the guard. And it was just awesome. And I know Mike was looking down, and he was happy about that. I want to announce that we are doing our kickoff on the implementation of the Smyrna Vision. And we're going to have a public meeting here at City Hall on March 24, which is a Tuesday night at 7 o'clock. There are five work groups, five different groups of people There are five work groups, five different groups of people that already have leaders and they're going to, each one of them explaining a little bit about what their group does. And we're asking for volunteers or you just come down and hear what it's all about and see if you want to participate. We want to get as many citizens as possible. The mayor and council has decided that they wanted to do this and find out from our citizens exactly what they wanted us to look like in the next 10 years. And today, we've had over 200 people that have been involved with surveys and meetings and all the different things that they've been doing. So please try to come out on the 24th. If you can't, you can go to the Smyrna website and there's a place on there to click on Vision Committee, Vision, Smyrna Vision, and it will give you some information. And I hope you'll be able to attend on Tuesday, the 24th of March. Thank you.
Ms. Tony Joe Howard, anything? Scott Cochran? Heather, be thy name in Chaff City, y'all have anything? Before we adjourn this, because no one, we don't have anything for showhouse hearing and no one signed up for citizens input. Tammy Sadler Jones, if you'll come down here, I've got your five-year, I was going to say attendance, but she's been with us five years. And what a wonderful five years that you came to us. That had been 2010 was when you came to us and I remember she was, I hope Ramar's listening because she was looking for a husband. And she said, I was going to try to help her and she said, I got to have somebody that ain't got any baggage with them. And man, she found the right guy. And they got the prettiest boy, his name's Arthur.
He lent to Arthur Jones.
Name's Arthur and he is cute as he can be, so I'm going to give you this. And you're younger than me, you come up here. I got a bad lip. Okay, halfway. Thank you, Tammy. Thank you so much. There's $300 cash in there. Thank you, Tammy, so much. That concludes our agenda and if there's no other business to be brought forward this body, then I'll clear this meeting adjourned at, what is it, 8:22? Good meeting.
Max, we were going to talk to you.